Twenty first. Twenty twenty two. Mr. Dongager served in the United States Army during the Korean War. Now like to have a moment of silence for all those veterans and first responders who have passed. Okay, moving on, our first item on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from our previous meeting on April twenty six, twenty twenty two. I'd say a motion to approve.
I'll move second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Russian.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Five in favor, zero against.
Okay, thank you. Before moving on, I just remind members of the council to speak into the microphone. I believe the last meeting might have been hard to hear for some members of the public who are online. I'll now move to announcements from the president, outgoing presidential marks. I don't know how that got there. I guess what I would say is, you know, it's been my pleasure over the last year to serve as council president. I will not bore you with the things that I've done, but say that collectively, it's been a team approach with the council, and so any of my accomplishments or all of our accomplishments as a collective council. I do want to do a special thanks to council, Councilor Chase. As I came into this role, I had transitioned my full-time job to a new job. And many, many times I deferred or would call Counselor Chase in an effort to scramble at the last minute to cover a meeting or at least get prepared to cover a, cover a meeting. And also represent the council in places that I could not be. So I just want to let you know publicly, I appreciate that, and the entire council appreciates that. So moving on is going to be a reorganization of the council and invite, invite the town clerk to come up and if you want to say a few words about the process for the public so they understand.
Certainly, is the public seeing this? We lost Eric.
I can, I can see it still.
Okay, okay.
He's here.
Kind of like the Wizard of Oz, Eric. Yes, so reorganizing the council. Usually I would be congratulating those of you who have just won your election or your reelection, but I guess I just congratulate you for being counselors and continuing to serve until we come up with something new for you to do. We're going to run the election of the president. First, we'll take nominations. Seconds, vote on them, and whoever you vote for president will then run the election for vice president. Once that's over, then we will use some playing cards to assign seats, and those will be numbered one through nine. Well, well, we skip. I skipped four and five because, you know, we have to have room for the president and the vice president to sit. So we have the other numbers and the ace is low in this, in this instance. So I believe with that, with your permission, I will open nominations for the president of the town council.
I'd like to recommend nominate Fred Chase as president of the town council.
Second that.
Okay, Counselor Chase, seconded, nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, I would call for a roll call vote, Josh, for Counselor Chase to be president of the council.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Russian.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Congratulations, Counselor Chase. Would you like to run the, the vice presidential election?
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm very pleased and humbled as well to receive those nominations and that affirmative vote. I'm very much looking forward to service as president of the council and service to the community as well continuing. And I certainly have to admit that I consider it a very daunting task in light of the highly successful presidency of Counselor Rushton. I think that he has certainly elevated the status of the office of president of the council. He has performed admirably, and he has executed a, a, an agenda that I think has been extremely beneficial to the town and reflects very well on the council. And so I, I extend my thanks and congratulations to him for such a job well done. And with some trepidation, I do look forward to having a successful record in that role as well. I thank you all very much.
Okay, so we'll move to seat, seat reassignment and.
We, we still have an election to do.
Oh, yo, 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 sorry. I guess I was thinking you already did that.
President Chase will run the election for vice president.
Oh, all right, all right. Let me ask if there are nominations from the floor for the office of vice president of council.
Nominate Eric.
He's not even here, but I would second that.
He's here somewhere.
And if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Russian.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodes.
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated.
Okay, congratulations to both of you. And now for the reassignment of seats. I'm just going to take, I have some old playing cards here, and they're numbered one through nine with, with, I believe, four and five missing. Those will be the president, vice president seats that they can fight over which one gets which one of those. And I don't know, there's two of you on each side. I'm just gonna go, they're not in any order in here, they're in random order.
Which seat is one?
This is one, one, two, three.
Very good. Ace.
Ace is the number one.
Six. One, two, three, four, five. I get that more close to the president.
I've seen this trick before.
Close as you can get, right?
Without actually being it. There you go.
He would be here.
Mr. Moore is coming over here to where Mr. Chase's spot. That would be right there. The number one seat goes to number three. So I'm switching with Mr. George. Okay, rotate. What's that?
Yeah.
Not good. Why don't we, doesn't get the move?
Why don't we put in the tables back?
Bill stays, stays put.
I saw the trick before. I know how it's done.
When are we putting these tables back? Counselor Chase, I have my first demand.
I like the seat, put this back together. I like the spot.
Keep an eye on everybody.
I'm trying to give me a warning. Just saying, just reorganized.
Returning to our agenda.
Returning to the agenda.
Next item is proclamations. There are no proclamations to be delivered this evening. And we return to item D, citizen open forum. If there are any citizens, kindly step to the podium, state your name and street, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes.
Yep, I'll try to be less than two. Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I'm vice chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and I'm also chair of the, I am the energy committee, waiting for two more appointments. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Matt Rushton for allowing me to participate in the fire station building committee piece. I was, it was a great joy to listen to in and maybe provide a few ideas, and I just wanted to thank him for the leadership there. The second thing, very quickly, is under, when you talk about the budget, and I hear, see you have a hearing, but when you talk about the budget, there is a energy fund in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And I really, as energy committee chair, I'd really like to understand what's the source of those funds? Where do they come from and how do they come about? Thank you very much, and congratulations on your chairmanship to Eric on his vice chairmanship and the rest of you sitting in these chairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Are there any other citizens who would care to step forward with remarks for citizens' open forum? Seeing none. We'll proceed. And time, I'm sorry, item E, appointments, there are none to report this evening. Hearings, we do have a hearing scheduled, and the time I note is seven thirteen PM. And I'll open the hearing for the annual town budget, and I'll refer to, defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will introduce the budget, and then obviously if anybody has questions or comments, feel free. It's a, is a hearing. The FY twenty-three proposed budget is aligned with the twenty, FY twenty-three budget resolution, which the council passed some months ago. And we continue to fund the programs, the service levels, and the goals and objectives outlined in the twenty twenty-two budget. This year, I do propose spending increases in very specific areas to support specific budgetary objectives, policy direction, and the community, excuse me, the communities' needs post pandemic. So specifically in terms of objectives, we developed four in addition to those found in the budget resolution, but, but the budget directives and the budget objectives as related to the department heads. One, maintain and improve on the efficiency and effectiveness of the delivery of town services. Support and promote economic activity, increase funding in areas where we see sizable service gaps, including DPW, town buildings, and HR. Preserve, maintain, and improve town buildings and grounds and infrastructure. So those, those reflect largely what we have, have been focused on over the, certainly over the last year, if not longer. And those were the objectives that we use for the FY, development of the FY twenty-three budget. Just in terms of financial principles, because I think it's worth explaining here for the public good. Following financial principles set forth a framework for sort of overall fiscal planning and overall management of the town's resources, and really are designed to ensure sound financial condition. Now, and in the future, now sound financial condition is defined as cash solvency. So very simple, very simply, the ability to pay our bills in a timely manner. Budget solvency, the ability to annually balance our budget. Long-term solvency, the ability to pay for future obligations and future costs. Service level solvency, the ability to provide needed and desired services. Reserve solvency, which is the ability to adapt and respond to economic conditions specifically through things such as our stabilization fund. Capital solvency, the ability to assess, maintain, and replace our capital assets when they need replacing. And finally, our bond rating and our objective and constant principle is to maintain or improve our current bond rating of A two. So those, excuse me, those are just some of the financial principles that we adhere to every year when we go through the budget process. In terms of the FY twenty-three expense budget, the budgetary overview, in general government, we're proposing budget increases due to the addition of a couple of FTEs. We're going from twenty-six point eight two FTEs to twenty-eight point seven two FTEs, and FTE is a full-time equivalent, obviously, because we don't hire, you know, eighty-two hundredths of a person, but, but we boil down the hours into full-time equivalents. Public safety, the proposed budget increases by two FTEs. One entry level for the fire department, one entry level for the police department. Terms of education, the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District tuition has increased based upon the commitments that we made last fall pursuant to our revenue sharing plan. And our current budget calls for an increase of the district's FY twenty-three operational assessment by three point, sorry, three point two one percent, or about nine hundred eighty thousand dollars over FY twenty-two budget. Fortunately for this, this year, and we're keeping a very close eye on the state chapter seventy aid, which makes, had made a significant, was proposed by the governor's budget to be significant, significantly increased to, by about eighteen percent. So the district is the recipient fortunately of an additional four million two hundred seventy-nine thousand two thirty-six in state chapter seventy aid to offset the, the assessment to the two towns. All other vocational school assessments, including Bristol Plymouth, increase by a total of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or about six point three percent, and that is driven solely over and above the, about a two and a half percent standard increase. That's driven by additional student counts in both Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Agricultural School. Another few highlights, the proposed increase for culture and recreation budgets, increasing the FTEs from nine point two eight to eleven point nineteen. Specifically adding a digital archivist position at the library, of which fifty percent is allocated to general fund. We also, excuse me, is also have shifted. Sorry, we've also shifted a hundred percent of the groundskeeper position, which has been within Parks and Rec for a number of years. We shifted the entire expense to the general fund where it more appropriately rests. Prior to now, it had been paid out of the revolving fund, which was not an appropriate place to, a place to pay that, pay that expense out of. And we have also allocated the Parks and Rec director a hundred percent to the general fund. Previously, that expense was allocated only sixty-five percent to the general fund. In terms of employee benefits, we're seeing an increase of about eight point nine percent this coming year. And that includes the retirement assessment, medical, life, workers' comp, one eleven F obligations and, and so forth. Our retirement assessment this year did increase by about ten point eight three percent, and our health insurance rates increased overall about three point two five percent. That does not reflect the, the increase in rates. I believe the increase in rates was three percent, but it reflects the increase in the number of employees utilizing our health insurance. So really, I just wanted to highlight those items. The increase, the increases are due largely to real aligning of, of positions, as I mentioned, also the addition of, of a number of positions as we continue to grow. So that essentially is the gist of the twenty twenty-three budget. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge certainly the assistant town manager and the finance director and all our department heads, as well as, as our administrative staff who spends an enormous amount of time and effort to develop the budget. Also would certainly thank the school committee and the finance committee and the budget and finance committee who really were, were quite instrumental in both outlining a budget resolution in the case of the council and, and the budget and finance committee, and also walking through and analyzing the objectives that, that we had for the twenty-three budget and buying into those objectives wholeheartedly. So, so my thanks to all those folks for the development of what I think was a very challenging budget, quite frankly, but I think it positions us very well for FY twenty-four and twenty-five when we are anticipating a recession and know that we're going to have to retrench to some extent. So, so that is what I have, Mr. President. I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. If there are general questions from the public, I would ask that anyone so inclined, please step to the podium and identify yourself. I don't see questions from the public. I know that Dr. Hunt had previously made an inquiry as to the, the energy funds that appear to be available. Are you in a position, Mr. Dutton, to respond to that?
Let me find that. And I will certainly comment on that. So if you give me a few minutes, I will.
Have a technical question, if I could, for Josh. Is, is that larger window as part of the recording covering the two smaller windows? No?
Okay, just, just our screen.
Okay.
Is it possible to minimize it?
Working on it.
Okay.
Are there any further questions from the public? Then I will ask, just while we're giving the town manager a moment. Is there anyone from the public who would care to speak in favor of the budget as described? Any members of the public who care to speak in opposition to the budget? Seeing none. I would ask if there are questions from the town counselors or Mr. Dutton. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Three short ones, if I could. And obviously, being the chair of the budget and finance committee, we've talked a lot about the, about the budget in committee, but not too many people were there. So some of these questions, I kind of know the answer to. It's just more education for anybody listening. Mr. Dutton, you mentioned potential recession next year or the year after. With regard to the revenue side, where do you think that the top three weaknesses are for us?
I think obviously local receipts is, is one of the top ones. We rely on, you know, as you know, local receipts is building permits, electrical permits, plumbing permit, but you know, things that are associated with development. If development shrinks, then, then we would expect some of those local receipts, obviously, to, to dry up. Regardless of the recession, we do look at the marijuana mitigation, which I know is counselor, one of Counselor Wood's key points, but we do look at that as possibly drying up, given changes in state law. And the, the interest in eliminating or limiting our ability to assess mitigation fees. So the others, probably one of the big ones, automobile excise. We, we generate a huge amount of money, three, over three and three-quarter million dollars on motor vehicle excise. With a recession comes, comes a, a reduction in the number of new car sales. New car sales are reflected in our motor vehicle excise, obviously, because when you, as people who, anybody that's bought a new car, you pay a lot of money in motor vehicle excise the first year, the second year, and it begins to decline after that. So, so those, the, those are probably three of the areas that we're looking at. I can tell you that we are, I mentioned it, alluded to it earlier, we're very concerned about the eighteen percent, not in a bad way, but we're concerned that the eighteen percent increase to the regional school district might be something that is a blip, although we're assured that it's not, but it might be something that's, that's a blip. And if that, the state decides, the next governor decides we're going to cut education spending, then, then we could be in, in a bit of trouble in that regard. So it's a, it's a weird time period. We're coming off of a COVID pandemic. There's been an enormous amount of money in the system, so to speak, in the federal and state systems and local systems too. And we're trying very hard to make sure that we separate what is COVID-related funding, whether it's ARPA funds, CARES funds, increase in grant funds and so forth, from, from what we need to operate our, our basic programs. So we're trying to insulate our basic programs to make sure that, that if we see a downturn and, or we see a reduction in state aid in chapter seventy, or we see a, a reduction in our local receipts, motor vehicle excise, that, that we can weather that storm successfully. So those are probably off the top of my head, those three or four things that we're really looking at.
Okay. And then with regard to the highway department budget, I know over the past couple of years, you've had a, a number of issues trying to hire and fill positions. Do you feel that you have a sufficient enough budget there to support the, this year's needs anyway?
A short answer, yes. We have, as you point out, we've always, we've always needed to increase that, that budget, and we will continue to have to increase that budget. Right now, our, our constraints aren't so much budget related, but human capital related. We're having a very difficult time trying to recruit, recruit employees, quite frankly, at, at any rate, you know, at any rate that, that we pay. So that, for the upcoming year, we anticipate that being an enormous challenge, and I'll, I'll be coming back to the council with a little bit of a report on that. Because we've foreseen that we'll have to change the way we do things a little bit in order to attract quality talent, right, right, all throughout the organization. So, so that will be a challenge for us over the next year. But short answer to your question, we believe we have enough to, to sustain and hopefully improve the operation down there.
All right. Finally, with, with the great Fourth of July celebration that we always have, what does the line item in our budget say?
Zero.
Thank you. It's all donations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Are there further questions from the council with respect to the budget? Yes, Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, as a member of, of the budget and finance committee meeting, we, we did meet several times to discuss the budget. I just have a comment and then two questions to the town manager, if I could. As far as the expenses go, I think that this is a very, very reasonable budget based on the needs that we have in this community. There was a question that I had relative to a particular salary that was being increased quite a bit. But the town manager did explain why that is happening and justified the reason for that. So I'm comfortable with that. And I think Counselor Wood and Counselor George on the budget and finance committee are as well. On the revenue side, Mr. Dutton, if you could just explain the four hundred thousand dollars that we're, we've put into the revenue under other available funds due to revenue loss. Can you just explain what that four hundred thousand dollars is and why we're using it?
Absolutely. Great, great question. And it highlights one of the COVID-related alterations we've made to this budget. Throughout the COVID pandemic, as, as you probably know, and, and others may not guess, our ambulance service suffered some pretty substantial losses in revenue, just because people weren't, BSU was not in session. People were not utilizing an ambulance to go to the hospital if they could at all avoid it. So, so our ambulance runs actually dropped. Therefore, our billings for ambulance service also dropped. So what we did here with the finance director's suggestion and, and recommendation is we used ARPA funds, which, which we can do to subsidize revenue loss. So specifically, those funds are designed to offset the revenue loss of the ambulance, which you see up, if you're looking at the sources and uses. You see the ambulance transfer is now budgeted at a million five seventy-eight and change. Originally, that number was a million nine seventy-eight and change. So in order to make sure that we were developing a realistic budget, we dropped that revenue figure to a million five seventy-eight, and we offset it with revenue loss funds from ARPA. I can tell you between when we developed the budget and now, we are quite optimistic that our ambulance revenues are bouncing back at a faster clip than, than we had projected, which is, I guess, good and bad. But, but they are bouncing back at a faster clip. So, so we're, we're fairly certain that we'll have a good balance in the ambulance reserve account.
Thank you. And on the snow and ice deficit, just the public should be aware that we are appropriating half a million dollars of our revenues to cover the deficit from last winter. Mr. Dutton, could you just go over, just briefly, our, our capital funds have, have made a tremendous amount of progress over the last several years. So if, if some of these revenue numbers don't come to head, but fruition this year, this coming year, we're, we're in good position to be able to make up any of those deficiencies with our reserves. Is that correct?
Correct. I think, I think we, what I presented to you. Correct. I think I think we what I presented to you and what what we've worked on over the last several months is a fairly conservative budget, as it always is. So we don't want to last thing we want to do is overpromise and 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 not be able to spend. So we and make sure that what we proposed to you is is what we feel is very realistic. Having said that, if we suffered some kind of catastrophic cliff in terms of the economy, and our local receipts dried up, or our our automobile excise began to dry up, we have a very healthy stabilization account, which is there specifically to offset the the adverse impacts. And if you remember the beginning of the COVID pandemic, we we anticipated that we would see a steep decline in revenues and and we transferred. I think it was up to a half million dollars in in stabilization or more. Actually, it was a million plus in stabilization in order to carry us through. Now, fortunately, we've done very well. We've been able to replenish the the stabilization account of the money that we took out, and we've gotten ourselves back to some semblance of of normal without impacting employees, without impacting the public and with without too severely adversely impacting the services that we provide. So good, good point, but I think we are.
And I think that I'm comfortable enough supporting this budget tonight, even though the the budget FY twenty-three budget is still a moving target on Beacon Hill. I mean, there there is movement up there in in a positive way to the communities we would most likely see after we after we appropriate this. And we all know that the state court, the state revenues are coming in well ahead of projection, and they're thinking of ways to give residents a tax relief somehow. We'll see what happens with that. But I think that this is a a good fiscal twenty-three budget. I think we'll get through this without any problems, but I do see I do see over the next couple of years, things are going to get pretty tight. But I appreciate you and your staff doing a lot of work on this year's budget. Looks pretty smooth to me. And I'm ready to approve this tonight.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Are there further questions from the councilors?
Yes, Consular Perry. Thank you. Just to go back to the question that was brought up earlier about the the energy funds question for a hundred thousand, we have that information available yet?
We do. Thank you. The so I'm told that we that it's essentially the differential, we track the savings from our National Grid Host account and to the cost for the same kilowatts to the solar farm that we we currently have an agreement with. So so it's it's that positive differential that is reflected there is the $100,000. And that's, I might add, that's revenue. It's on the revenue side for those that that are looking. So that is, that is what I have on that. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I did have one question. I think that the
Eric.
Well, I'm sorry, Consular Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess I have maybe more of a comment than a question. First, thank you for a well-thought-out budget. You know, clearly, a lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate all that. I think for me, like, these budget discussions are are really a two-part conversation. I think the first part is about picking the right things to spend our money on, right? If we only had one dollar, what is the most most important thing for us to buy? And that's the budget part, right? We assign money to the things that matter the most to us. But for me, the the second part of the conversation is about getting what we paid for. Right? Are are the outcomes for these investments well understood? And and will they ultimately like match our expectations? And so at some point, we're going to have to decide, is it money well spent, right? And and I just wanted to call out, I'm excited about the partnership and progress we started to really identify what those outcomes are that follow the budget decision. And so I guess maybe with that context about how I I process budgets and actually your comment about the risk of educational funding, if the COVID if the COVID money sort of dries up, I am really concerned about one budget category here, and that's education. I think if we bundle together all of the spend on education in the school district, it comes up to more than any other budget item, and actually more than all of the other budget items combined. So I think it's about, if my math is right, somewhere around like fifty-five percent of our town's budget goes to education. So for me, that's that's the first part of that budget equation, right? Education clearly matters to us, and we're outspending everything else in this town to get a good outcome, which is great. I think the second part of that budget question, though, is are we confident that the money is getting us the outcome that we need? Right? Are we getting a great education for the kids at Bridgewater? And I'm really concerned because this budget item is increasing quickly. And if you add in the extra money from COVID, there is a huge jump in in budget this year. But the the outcome has actually stalled. Right? Bridgewater schools are achieving less than fifty percent of accountability targets, while a similar school in Rainham is achieving eighty-seven percent. Right? And this is despite having some, I think, some of the best staff and teachers and parent groups and support groups I've ever seen. My kids have amazing teachers and principals, and I really couldn't be more more impressed. But I am concerned that when you look at the numbers associated with the schools of Bridgewater, they aren't the sort of numbers that pull people into our town. And they might actually be the sorts of numbers that people run away from. And so for me, you know, I'm 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 my, in my opinion, I think we're struggling to achieve excellence because there really isn't a clear district plan plan on how to get this outcome that we're funding. Right? The student success plan only talks about what tasks they've accomplished. It doesn't actually measure anything about what the student success is when those tasks happen. So we don't know if it's working. And I I think, you know, if I just sort of tie this back to the funding piece, right, as our costs continue to to rise, I am really concerned that we're continuing to pay more money into a system that doesn't have a clear plan. And so my my ask back to, I think, the councillors is, you know, probably for next year, and maybe as we go through budget discussions with the school committee next year, I would really ask us to focus on outcomes, right? Make sure that it's not just somebody achieving a task, but they're actually effective. You know, I think in my experience, we always hear about all of the hard work happening in our schools, and I love that. And I think we should always congratulate and appreciate hard work. But we can't mistake effort for effectiveness. I'm not challenging in any way the leadership effort here, but I am concerned about the effectiveness in spending fifty-five percent of our budget on something that isn't getting the outcomes by the state scores, by their by their calculator, not ours, is not getting the outcomes, makes me really nervous, especially if that COVID money dries up, and all of a sudden, we have to come up with more money into a system that, in my mind, doesn't have a clear plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Are there further questions from the council with respect to the budget? I did have a question for Mr. Dutton, if I may. Consular Gallagher had alluded to the fact that the the budget process is still underway on Beacon Hill, and in fact, the Senate Ways and Means Committee has just made a recommendation for additional funding beyond the supplemental budget, which would net Bridgewater some additional hundred thousand plus dollars. And in my understanding, there's not any likelihood that that amount would be decreased, and it may actually increase as we proceed through the the rest of the negotiations on Beacon Hill and through the conference committee. And my question is, how can we best I I want to say earmark, but how can we, how can we reserve potentially those funds to offset any of the anticipated shortfalls that we might see with respect to, for example, example, revenues from local businesses owing to a downturn in the economy?
Great question. That's one of the things that is actually highlights this this sort of benefits of this form of government. We can, if if the additional revenues end up coming through the Beacon Hill washing machine sausage-making process intact, then we know we've got additional revenues. And our practice is not to not to rush to propose to spend those revenues. But as you, excuse me, as you point out, to make sure that that, you know, and as we get through the fiscal year, make track our revenues, our local receipts, the ones that we are sort of that are particular to Bridgewater. And if we're seeing a shortfall, then we know we've got we've got additional revenues on the on the on the state aid side in order to offset some of those. But but that's, you know, that's something that the Finance Department and the Finance Director just sort of keep, you know, off to the side. And if it ends up that we never use them, you know, those funds come back to us as free cash at the end of the year. So so it is, it is a nice, to the extent that they remain there and that they come through, it's a nice little insurance policy to sort of protect us against the the downside on on the local receipts.
Very good. I thank you.
Mr. President, I actually, I do have one quick question. I apologize. So I just want to just touch base through you to the town manager, just making sure that the timing of the budget and my request tonight to have an update, or at least update all the councils on the Ad-Hoc Committee on DEI. Is are there goals, budgeted goals in the budget to support some of the efforts and the outcomes of the DEI report?
In, I'll say indirectly, we do, we have budgeted additional funding through the Human Resource Department. And and I I can't tell you that that's going to cover, you know, potential D E and I expenses, but there is some additional money there. So I think the you know, I'll I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But the recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Committee, I think, were excellent. Now, our job is to translate some of those into legis, excuse me, legislation for the council. And then I would anticipate a more appropriate, specific budget line item in the twenty twenty-four budget to cover D E and I to to some of the expenses that they contemplate in the in the Ad-Hoc Committee report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions for the town manager with respect to the budget? Seeing none. The time is seven forty-four, and I will close the public hearing on this matter. We'll be we'll be speaking about some of the specific legislation under the budget further on this evening. Moving to license transactions, we do have before petition twenty twenty-two dash zero twenty, one-day entertainment permit for the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society of Bridgewater for a, it's actually three separate permits for a three-day festival to take place in June. And I'm not sure, Mr. Town Manager, if I may, I'll defer to you if you have any particular comment with respect to this petition.
Nothing in particular. This is a return of a widely anticipated event, summer event. And no, no particular changes are anticipated this year. I don't believe they've done this over the last two years, I think. So it's it's a happy return to the to the festival.
Thank you very much. I note that the appropriate preliminary steps have been taken, and all town departments seem to have signed off an approval of this annual event. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. A voice vote will be called for for this measure. All those voting in favor of approval of the petition, say aye.
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 Opposed. Thank you very much, and that is unanimous. I appreciate that. Moving on to presentations, we have none this evening. The Town Manager's Report. I'll turn this over to Mr. Dutton once again with respect to the Ad-Hoc D and I Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try not to talk too much. I do want to highlight the report that was issued by the Ad-Hoc Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. And I'll recognize the committee members individually when I'm done, but I do want to thank them for spending in an inordinate amount of time on this. It really is a thorough, well-put-together, well-thought-out report. It is on the website for those that would like to read it. But I thought I would highlight just some of the the pieces here to you. That hot committees was the Ad-Hoc Committee was created roughly a year ago, and I asked them to come back. I gave them a mission of coming back to the council or coming back to me with proposals for, you know, a townwide, permanent townwide D E and I Committee, how that would work, what the mission should be, and so forth. They went through as a group, as a committee, they went through a fair amount of training themselves to try to to try to get a handle on on what their mission was, who they were, how they should approach this. And I largely gave them just sort of a hands-off charge to just, you know, give me recommendations that I can then bring to the council. They, the the committee actually picked up where the council sort of left off. Town Council voted a town vision in in February of this year, and as part of that vision, the it references all these things which we will try to do and and the the specific objectives. And it says, this will be supported by a best-in-class town government that prioritizes sound fiscal management, fast and reliable municipal services, community engagement and inclusivity, and economic prosperity to create better everyday lives for all generations and cultures. So the committee, that resonated with the committee, and they sort of picked up on that theme and pointed out that according to the twenty twenty census, US Census, Bridgewater is approximately eighty-two percent white, seven percent black, four percent Hispanic or Latino, one percent Asian. And that they made appropriate note, does not account for other self-identification factors, including non-binary genders, religion, sexual preference, and so forth. So they recognize that that Bridgewater is changing. And and with that change, unless properly managed and and properly articulated, political and social divisions can divisions can easily manifest in in conflict and discrimination. So that's sort of where they were coming from. And they they point out that, you know, a lot of us, quite frankly, feel that Bridgewater is is a little bit immune to a lot of the the sort of systemic issues that that we see nationwide. However, they did develop in in cooperation with the school district and and other groups, dice, in particular quantifiable data that identified that there were disparities that existed and how we how we operate. And there were people who were negatively affected and negatively impacted by some of the the standard practices, which we all take somewhat for granted. So they point out, and I'll I'll quote it, rationales for diversity initiatives are moving away from the social responsibility case and towards a business case for diversity. And this is something that I actually talked to the committee about it at some length. Studies show that diverse teams, whether they're work teams, community teams, community partnerships, but diverse teams yield better outcomes in creativity, innovation, performance, and competition than homogeneous teams. And and that I can tell you, I'm a firm believer of. Bringing in, when when we try to reach a consensus, whether it's at the council level or or operationally, when we try to reach a consensus, it's so much more productive and fruitful to have a diverse group, and I'm talking about a whole range of diversities, a diverse group at the table to provide recommendations and advice to try to reach a consensus. So so they they sort of took that kind of philosophy and ran with it and and came up with a mission and a vision for a permanent DEI Committee. And the mission is to ensure that all town initiatives, policies, and procedures demonstrate a commitment to centering principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion while serving as a driver of social change in the town of Bridgewater. D E and I Committee should have four strategic goals. One is increased representation of historically excluded populations in all areas of town government. Conduct annual equity audits to ensure accountability within town government. Lead community education campaigns to engage the community about local issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then finally, Uh, and then finally, four, facilitate collaboration, uh, between the citizens of Bridgewater and town government to create a culture, uh, that welcomes and celebrates all identities. So they also then talked a little bit about, um, how the, the permanent committee should be made up, and I, I won't go through that. You can read that. And, uh, and, and look at that, um, yourself. They made, uh, four recommendations, uh, which I'll just quickly go through. Uh, for final recommendations, one, adopt a diverse, excuse me, a diversity, equity, inclusion committee, uh, which we, we talked about, obviously. And number two, establish an office, uh, of D E I, specifically staff it with a paid, uh, full-time staff. Uh, again, we will, we will, uh, talk about that a whole lot more after, um, after the budget process now is, is over, we'll, we'll free up some time to have more discussions about that. Number three, develop and implement a strategic plan for D E and I. Um, and create a strategic plan for a comprehensive D E and I initiative, including assessment of town policies, practices, environments and community needs, um, and ensure that the community is deeply engaged. Utilize D E and I committee members as part of the steering committee, uh, would be their recommendation. And then finally, number four, uh, identify funding, which is key to almost everything, identify funding sources to fund, uh, D E and I initiatives, uh, including grants. And then potentially a percentage of, of, uh, specific revenues that the town, uh, potentially may have. So, so I do, um, I do think it's, as I said, I think it's a worthy read. Um, we will plan on, um, taking this up and developing some legislation for the council that would propose, uh, a permanent D E and I committee that would be part of the administrative code. Um, and then, uh, and then we will, uh, sort of take it, uh, from that point on. So I do want to recognize the committee members who poured a lot of time and effort into this. Antoinette Riley Purifit, purified, uh, Arti Coley Del Rigo, Cleone Mainville, Joe Di Maria, Rig Noel, who was the chair of the committee, uh, Sheila Ralston Bracy, um, Shirley Phillips, Susie Robinson and Teresa Cruz Foley. And, uh, I think, uh, my gratitude goes to all of them for, for spending, uh, ser, some serious time and effort, uh, to give us a really serious and well-thought-out report. So, so that is, um, that is just a little bit on the D E and I committee report. Again, it's on the website, so I encourage folks to go, uh, take a look at that if you want. And I will, uh, be coming back to the council with some legislation likely, uh, over the summer, uh, to create a permanent committee. So, but happy to, happy to answer questions about that.
Are there any questions for the town manager? Seeing none at the moment. Uh, thank you very much. Moving on, we, um, have no discussion scheduled for this evening. Uh, I'm sorry, we do have one discussion scheduled for this evening. Very important one. Uh, we asked that our town clerk, um, Mary Lee Hunt, please, uh, begin her presentation with respect to upcoming elections.
Thank you, President Chase. And upcoming elections and just past elections, I thought, uh, probably everybody knows how all the elections came out, but I thought it seemed responsible to just come before you and read out the numbers and have it be on record of a town council meeting that, uh, you, you and the public who's watching are informed on the, the bottom line of our elections. So the elections were on the twenty-third of April. And out of eighteen thousand four hundred and fourteen voters, we turned out one thousand six hundred and thirty. So think about that one minute. I'm very grateful for each one of the sixteen thousand, sixteen hundred and thirty who came. The results were for the regional school committee. Um, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna read them off what they got in Bridgewater, what they got in Rainham, and then what their total was. And I'm reading them in the order that they were listed on the Bridgewater ballot, if that makes sense. Melinda Barrett in Bridgewater had two hundred and eighty-two votes, fifty in Rainham, a total of three hundred and thirty-two. Catherine Martelli, who was the winner of the race, uh, six hundred and six in Bridgewater, one hundred and ninety-seven in Rainham, eight hundred and three total. Cleone Mount Mainville, six hundred and thirty-three in Bridgewater, one hundred and fourteen in Rainham, seven hundred and forty-seven total. Louis Di Marino, who was the winner in the Rainham, uh, on the Rainham side of the race, eight hundred and fifteen in Bridgewater, two hundred and one in Rainham, uh, one thousand and sixteen votes, the highest vote getter of all the candidates. And Susan Pruwandowski, five hundred and fourteen from Bridgewater, one eighty-seven from Rainham, seven hundred and twenty-eight total. So that was the school committee. I know that was quick, but you can find all that on the town clerk's website. Um, or on the, in the, on the town's website, under town clerk. For the trustees of libraries, the library, they were all incumbents. Danielle Oliari topped the ticket, ticket with, uh, one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine, Janet Bedford-Dye with one thousand one hundred and eight, and Nancy Sarno with one thousand one hundred and twenty-one. And on the question for the fire station, um, one thousand one hundred and fifty-three were for it, four hundred and forty-six were against it, and thirty-one ballots were blank for that one. So just, yeah, do I see a smile on, on former President Russians face there? So that's, that was just the result. I thought it was appropriate to bring you those results in person. And then I want to talk to you about the, um, eighteen thousand four hundred and fourteen voters we have, of whom sixteen hundred and thirty turned out for the election. I want more. I want more for her elections, and I'm trying very hard to figure out how to get that. We've had numerous complaints since the election that they didn't know there was an election. Nobody knew there was an election. I will say, we're ordered by the town to put up three sign boards around town. Those were up for at least three weeks, maybe four weeks before the election. The fire station put out lighted, uh, signs at at least two places and had firefighters actually put out, um, like campaign signs on, on yard, yard signs. Many of the candidates had yard signs. It was, there were blasts that went out continually telling people who have signed up, that, that there was an election. I put it on three Facebook pages. I honestly don't know what else to do. It was on, it was on our census forms. We always have all the elections of the year on the census forms. So I'm at a little bit of a loss how to engender more participation in the elections. Certainly it's what we want. I, I feels badly for people who were so sure that they didn't know there was an election and didn't get to vote and feel that, that, that their public option was taken away from them. So I've got a few suggestions. I'd, I'd really like your input on these. One is for you. I wondered if we order, if the town council can perhaps pay for some yard signs that just simply say something like this, if you can see it, it says vote Saturday and it'll give seven AM to eight PM and the location. And these would just be permanent signs that in, in my, my way of thinking, we'd give five to each of the counselors, we'd give five to each of the library trustees. We'd give five to each of the, the Bridgewater School Committee members, and I would take five as the elected town clerk. And we keep them year after year, you put them up on the Sunday before the election. So they're up for one week. They're bright, they look patriotic, and we would have, that would give us about, um, we would have about a hundred and twenty of them then around town, in addition to whatever science candidates are putting up. And I've asked for five for the, um, front of the academy building, and I've already asked the historic district commission if that would be all right with them. And I think, Michael, I need to ask your permission too, because I think you actually control the signs on the academy lawn. But I was hoping if we could put five of them in the circle going around, I didn't think they would be too distracting for, um, people driving around that, which is always my concern, that they're taking time to read a sign instead of pay attention to traffic. But I thought if there were five of them scattered around, they'd have enough time to read them as they went around. So that would be asking for some funds, maybe from town council funds or for the town council to figure out where. And, um, we might not be able to do it by the, by the election on the sixth of September, only because if we are putting a location on it. I am hoping that in, by November, we will have changed our voting location to the new school, instead of having it at the, um, at the existing, at the, the, what's the Mitchell at the middle now, what used to be the old high school. So I don't want to put an address on the permanent signs until we've got that figured out. So I'm just looking for a reaction from you on that. I've also asked the treasurer if we could put a notice in the August tax bill. They send the tax bills out twice a year. And I'm hoping that August is one of those times. I really don't know, and I forgot to ask him. He did say that they would put the notice in if I would write the notice. So I've written a notice just to remind people there's an election coming up on September sixth and another one on November eighth. I think after that, I'm kind of out of ideas.
Yes, Councilor Rushton.
When you're all set.
No, I'm ready to listen.
Well, first of all, I appreciate you coming in here tonight. Um, you know, certainly, uh, with the town manager, having a number of presentations related to the fire building, uh, on the, during the election. I, I did hear from many, many groups, no matter where we were, that they did not know about it. And so I, I, I feel your sense of frustration. So I just had a couple of quick questions. In, in comparison to other communities, how do we fare? Uh, uh, do we have more votes or less votes?
You know, I think we're about the average. I've seen, we have a, I have, I belong to both the town clerks and the city clerks statewide groups. All of them have been complaining, how do we get voters out? How do we, how do we turn voters out? So we're not alone in this, and I don't think unless there's some really big political deal in their town that's drawing people out. I, I think there's a, I don't know if it's a general malaise. Or I get very frustrated. I have my master's in political communication. It gets very frustrating to me to try to figure out how to communicate with the public. We have so many more ways of communication than we've ever had in our life, and I think it, it, they just don't work. When I post something on Facebook, uh, one person makes a comment on it, the next person makes a comment on the comment, the next person makes a comment on the comment of the comment. And pretty soon, nobody even knows what was ever posted in the first place. And so like, maybe twelve people saw it and everybody else is spending time commenting on something that's totally irrelevant. So it's just a little frustrating.
So, so you answered my second question, which was, uh, there are strategies that you're hearing that are successful in other communities, and it doesn't sound like that's the case. So, I, I know that one of the things that we heard was, uh, a, a real request to have a postcard mailer. And so I would ask you first, uh, is there an estimated cost to do that? Second, um, are we hitting all of the opportunities where we currently mail to residents? So you talked about tax bills, water bills, sewer bills. Those come out a number of times to residents, and I'm wondering if there isn't just a piece, it's a constant reminder that, you know, this is elections and this is the date. And then second, or lastly, is there a system in place that the town of Bridgewater becomes aware of new residents? And whether that's through car registration, um, or anything else, tax bills that we can organize sort of a, a welcome to our town. These are sort of key dates, these are things that are happening, this is our webpage. So sort of just get information to new residents that come into the community about what's going on.
That's my art too. When I was first, I think one of the first things I did when I was elected was look around to see what we could do to form some sort of a welcome wagon to Bridgewater. And it's just very frustrating. There is no place that I could find that anyone, it would have to be through the private realtors telling me who bought a house or something like that. I checked with the assessors. I don't know, Michael, if you agree with this, but I really did look into it, um, a few years ago. Because I think it's a wonderful way to greet people when they come to town. And I, thirty-six years ago, when we moved to Bridgewater, I was frustrated that they didn't have a welcome wagon there. And it just seems like it's a way to promote your businesses and to welcome people and to to tell them all these things. These are when our elections are, these are where our town council meetings are, these are who your town counselor is, this is how our government works. The, these are things that make you part of a community. And I'm happy to listen to any way that people can help me figure out how to do that. I haven't been able to figure out how to do it. The mailings, uh, we have about nine thousand households. So you can do the, I, I mean, it's what, fifty-three cents? I don't know, postcard is probably less than fifty-three cents, something like forty cents. My office doesn't have the budget, but.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems to me that, uh, it, it's at least worth a, a try one time to at least do the mailer. It doesn't seem like a significant financial hurdle.
Yeah.
To get that information out in our next election and see if it draws out, um, additional residents or if it's even helpful.
I think we have to. So I'd like to just draw a distinction between elections. Because we have coming up the state primary, it's going to be much better advertised. There's, well, maybe not the state primary, that's usually pretty low. But the state election on November eighth, I think people are going to be pretty well informed. We're changing governor. That's, that's kind of a big deal. And so I think people are going to be a well-informed, we had a nice turnout for the presidential election in, um, twenty twenty. It's the annual town elections. It's the, the BP school election. It's those kind of elections that are, are just very difficult. So I, I just don't want anybody to think our office takes it casually and that, oh, well, we don't care how many people turn out. We really do. I mean, we have workers there ready to do it. We've upgraded all of our equipment. We are ready to have, um, vibrant, um, enthusiastic elections and sitting there all day knitting and reading a book. Isn't that, you know, which is what our, our poll workers end up doing, and we end up paying them to do that because we need to have them there in case people actually come. So I, I love your ideas. I will talk about a, a postcard. We are definitely talking about putting it in with the, the tax bills. And hoping that it's something that maybe people can just put on their refrigerator. We used to always have it as a tear off on the bottom of our census, so that people could tear that off and keep it. As one, a long time Bridgewater resident said to me on the phone yesterday, nobody reads their census and nobody even returns their census. So that's another, that's another thing, is they just throw them in the, in the trash when they get them. So anything you think of, I'm happy to listen. We're happy to give it a try. Eric, I, I, it's up to you, Mr. President, but I see, uh, Vice President Moore raising his hand.
Well, I, I don't know that I have any particular suggestion apart from, I, I had also considered the, the possibility of a, of a postcard mailing. And, and I think we, we should probably consider that as one possibility if, if we can, um, uh, determine some funding for it. But, um, uh, I certainly share your concern, uh, with respect to, um, voter apathy or disaffection, as the case may be. I, I think that, um, you know, we have to rely upon, uh, you've used the word of a vibrant, uh, electorate and certainly a very enthusiastic electorate. We want to see that. And, uh, I think we should do whatever we possibly can to encourage, uh, more active participation. I know the councilor Gallagher has a question or comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments. I, I think it's fair to say that in our democracy, the least amount of participation is what will affect you the most. As one person once said, all politics is local. And it's our local elections that have the least amount of turnout when it, when it's compared to a state primary or a national presidential governor's election in, in November. But, you know, we, we just voted seventy million dollars without blink of the eye. There weren't any questions, except for one from Mr. Hunt about, except from the council, from the public. We had a public hearing. We posted the public hearing where we should have seventy million dollars. Well, we haven't voted on the expenditures yet, but we're about to. So when we have town elections, and I've been involved in quite a few, as many, all of you have as well. Usually it's a hot button issue, a real hot button issue that'll get the voters out, and it usually comes down to the dollar. Now this year, we voted twenty-three million dollar debt exclusion for a new main fire station.
Now, this year, we voted $23 million debt exclusion for a new main fire station and some repairs to the substation. Now, usually, something like that will generate a lot of interest in the sense of coming out to vote vote for it or even vote against it. There really wasn't an organized effort in any way to vote against it. The public seemed to have been very comfortable with how it was being presented in the forums that Mr. Rushton and the town manager put on. They yeah, didn't get 100% of the vote. Nothing ever does. But I think that people felt comfortable that this is a good idea and they came out and voting was 65%. I believe that that's amazing for a debt exclusion to pass with those kinds of numbers. The third point is that usually it's also the candidates that generate interest. And there other than school committee, which there was a race, that's a good sign. We actually had a race. That usually it's it's candidates that fuel people to get out through putting their lawn signs up, doing a mailing, doing standouts in the center of town and things like that. And because we're involved and we have our ears to the grind more so than those that are not, you know, we knew there was an election. And I think I think everything was done. But I'm all for some of the recommendations you made. I'm all for promoting, you know, our democracy and trying to get more people out to vote. And and maybe later this year or whenever those council seats get approved, you know, you could see a flurry of activity. You might not, but you could see a flurry of activity of people running for councillor seats at that point. As you know, back in 2002, when the selectmen expanded from two to three, excuse me, from three to five.
13 of us.
Yeah, that between the one year, two year, three year term plus, we had the high school, a debt exclusion and the CPC on the ballot that day in April of 2002. I think we saw 35 35 to 40% of the voters out in 2002. But again, you had hot button issue, a lot of people running, different views. You had an expansion of the Board of Selectmen. You had $100 million high school. And the CPC was on on that ballot, too. So, you know, elections are driven by the issues that are in front of the voters. But I am all in favor of doing anything to promote and get and not suppress voters, but to try to alert them on on what's happening. And it's cyclical. Some years, you're going to have a lot of activities, some years not. But I think that 1608, that's, you know, I've been watching some of these other town elections, and that's just about where everybody else is, too. It's not just Bridgewater. But thank you for coming in.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Moore has a question.
Councilor Wood.
No, Eric has has.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Councilor Moore, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So maybe just a quick bit of feedback that I heard from people, I think with school age children, there were a fair amount of people that were interested in voting. But because the election fell during the school vacation, we weren't able to get there. And I did try to promote, you know, kind of some of the other options they had to vote if they weren't going to be physically present. But I think that created just enough of an obstacle that some of them didn't participate. So I know that dates are challenging, but if if there is a way for us to support or help or sort of align the election so that they don't collide with the popular vacation weeks for the the school age family, that that might also help. I don't know.
Hey, could I respond to that, Mr. Moore? Because our election is set in our charter and it's the Saturday before the last Monday in April. It almost always is the Saturday after school break. So everybody's been gone all week doing whatever they're doing. They come home, they've got laundry. It's almost always opening day of the fields. They've got grocery shopping to do, laundry to do, get their kids out to sports. I think one of the big things we could do is get a sign out at the sports fields or have some people out the sports fields saying, don't forget to go vote when you get done here, just go over and vote or be vote right before you come in. Because otherwise, you're exactly right. There's a lot of other things they're doing and they've been tuned out. The other thing they can do is always they can absentee vote at the right in our office. They can come out, fill out an absentee application and vote right then and there as soon as we get the ballots in. So and they can write and we can mail them to them. They can mail them back into us or put them in the drop box. So they don't have to wait until that exact day. I'm guessing in in the primary and in the election, they're going to give us some more early voting time. And that seems to draw people in. People seem to like that quite a bit. But as far as changing the date, some people have mentioned to me, well, let's just change the date. You guys are facing right now a charter change. And you're knowing that it's not it's not something simple. It's not something easy. It's not something quick. And so Dennis mentioned, Councilor Gallagher mentioned the upcoming, maybe re revoting of all the council seats. I was at a meeting of tri-clerks, the tri-county clerks two weeks ago. KP Law was there. And they said to us, so many people are asking for charter changes that there's just a pile of them up there. They said, talk to your senator, talk to your representative, ask them to push, push, push yours through. Because if it isn't through by December, it's going to have to go into next year. I heard from somebody else that they're going to combine them all and put all the charter changes through at the same time. I don't really know if that's true or practical because charter changes are pretty individual. Ours are very individual. They're not like other other peoples. We're changing the number of counselors and precincts and all of that sort of thing. So I'm not optimistic about how fast we can change when we have our election. If it were someplace other than the charter, maybe we could snap our fingers and do it more quickly. But that's kind of an impediment. I won't take any more of your time. Oh.
A Councilor Wood has a question.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I've learned a lot over the past month about our election cycle and, you know, the timing of that. And so just to be make everyone aware, so if we wanted to change, for example, the school committee election period, that's actually, it was a 1977 special act that puts that decision into the regional school agreement. So we would need to work with the district and Rainham for the school committee alone to shift the dates if we wanted to shift away from the the current date. And the second piece is, as a town clerk says, is is for our own is baked into the charter and we'd have to decide. So those things don't have to run together. They could run independently, but it kind of makes sense if we're doing, you know, our elections together that goes together. But Marilyn and I talked a little bit about the impact that the the loss of the local paper has. And I think that's a huge gap. So there's still an enterprise. But, you know, who reads it? Who in the modern age actually reads it? And that sort of thing. So as we talk about solutions, I don't want to get into the into the details here. But as we talk about solutions, the communication that we need to think about kind of needs to replace that communication from years ago. Because if there was an issue that was hot, like the I'll use the plastic bag example from years ago. I was on one side, Councilor Norris was on another side. The enterprise had a two column write up of, you know, what our positions were. And so as people went to the poll that year, they made their decision on extra information. And that's really hard to do now because the enterprise doesn't have that that reach or that that depth that it used to have. So as we go through talking about these solutions, we should keep in mind, how do we replace that type of energy that used to be in the past? Thanks.
And I'll put one last. I said I would shut up, but one more thing. We we have BTV is great. They're wonderful at covering everything. They're wonderful at putting it out on Facebook and making it available to people. I just don't know how many people go and watch it. So they do a wonderful job of covering issues. And if anybody wants to go in to BTV and have a debate about issues, they're always at well, in my book, they've always been willing to schedule things so that we can get issues out before the community. It's a matter of the community. I mean, you can you can lead a horse to water, right? You can't make them drink. And I feel like that's that's what we're doing. So I love our horses. I'd like to make them drink. Thank you, guys, very much. I'll let you go back to your real business.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hunt. We can move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to be delivered to the council this evening? Seeing none. Legislation for action. Order FY 22-058, acceptance of library grants. And I will defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, this this is the acceptance of two grants earmarked for the library, specifically the Veterans Project. And the two grants are one coming from just pulling it up, apologize. One coming from the Flority Little Trust, the other coming from the State Historical Records Advisory Board, the State Historical Records Advisory Board in the amount of 15,000 and the Flor Little Trust in the amount of 25,000.
Thank you. I note that the Budget and Finance Committee approved this measure on on May 3rd and by a three to nothing vote and the Finance Committee on May 4th by also by a five to zero recommendation. A voice vote will suffice for this measure. I'll ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None? It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to order FY 22-059 contractual buyouts. Once again, to Mr. Dutton, please.
Mr. President, this is a contractual buyout specifically for accrued sick time as required and mandated by collective bargaining agreements. In this case, there's a fire department retirement and a highway department retirement added together amount to $127,972 coming out of the employee liability fund, which is, as you counselors know, is specific to the sick mostly specific to the sick buyback.
Thank you. And I note that the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to nothing to recommend and the Finance Committee voted five to nothing to recommend this measure. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Voice vote once again, please. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Point of order. Usually you would ask for discussion after the motions.
Bill's got something to say.
No, I don't. I just I may have something to say later on the evening.
Thank you for that. But I will, as a formality, is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed? There are none and it's unanimous. I thank you. Order FY 22-060 contractual buyouts. Once again, please to the town manager.
Mr. President, this is pays for the the expenses associated with the transfer of the golf operation from the public and public running to a contract running. It pays out a retirement and it pays out other expenses associated with that transition.
And this order has been recommended for approval by the Budget and Finance Committee by a three to nothing vote and by the Finance Committee by a five to nothing vote. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Moving on. Order FY 22-061, transfer order. It's the for the DEF debt service paydown. And I'll refer to the town manager, please, for comment.
Mr. President, this, as the as most counselors know, the council created a district infrastructure financing plan several years ago, which financed the improvements on Elm Street. This is a transfer that pays the debt obligation, in this case, that pays off the ban. And on an annual basis, you will continue to see transfers from the DEF fund to the general fund in order to pay the long term bond. In this case, it pays off the bond anticipation note, which we do not need to roll over into a permanent ban. I mean, a permanent bond, sorry.
I thank you. Once again, the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees have unanimously recommended approval. And I would ask for I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a discussion? I'll get in rhythm.
It's the first night. You're okay.
That's right. It's a rookie mistake. Moving on to order FY 22-062, rescind loan authorization for the DEF district. And once again, please to the town manager.
Mr. President, this, nothing should give the counselors more pleasure than rescinding loan authorizations. This is an outstanding loan authorization that we do not need to to exercise due quite frankly, due to the success of the of the DEF that the council voted. So I'm asking to rescind the loan authorization so we can be done with that.
I thank you. Budget and Finance and Finance Committees have unanimously voted a recommendation of approval on this measure. I would entertain a motion.
Discussion. Before before Mr. Wood yells at you again.
Discussion?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Now, just.
Thank you. Discussion?
I just, if I may, I think the finance team on on these particular orders has done a tremendous job at, you know, restructuring and saving the town some money here. So kudos to them. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second and all those in favor kindly vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Transfer to order FY 22-063, transfer order, what the High Street Water Treatment Plant to refer, I'll defer, please, to Mr. Dutton for comment.
Mr. President, as the council knows, we've talked about before in terms of financing for both the water plant and the sewer plant, we are analyzing our cash and using and exercising our expenditure of cash as wisely as possible. In this case, the water plant does have some costs that are not eligible for the state revolving fund. And so we are proposing using retained earnings, retained cash at the within the water, the water enterprise to pay down that those expenses that aren't covered by the state revolving fund.
Thank you. Budget and Finance and Finance Committees have unanimously voted approval of this measure recommendation. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? A voice vote, please. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Order FY 22-064, transfer order for the sewer treatment plant. Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, very similar. We're transferring a million five from the what is currently the balance in the sewer betterment fund, also 500,000 from retained earnings for a total of $2 million to fund specifically ongoing engineering and also the expense of hiring an owner's project manager.
Thank you. Budget and Finance and Finance Committees have unanimously voted approval of this measure. I would ask for I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, kind of vote aye. Opposed? I see none. Thank you very much. Resolution FY 22-007, in recognition of Gay Pride Month. This is a resolution presented before the council two weeks ago authored by Councilor Rushton. And it has not been referred to a committee for approval. It may be considered this evening. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it is unanimous. Thank you. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Resolution FY twenty-two dash zero zero eight, honoring Juneteenth. This motion, this resolution was also authored by Councilor Rushton and presented before the council at our last session. It had not been referred to a committee for recommendation, so we can consider that this evening. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. Budget orders. We now contend with some of the matters that arose in connection with tonight's approval of the, of the budget. Budget order FY twenty-two thirty-three, annual town budget. This is the, the omnibus approval. I would defer to the town manager for any particular comment beyond what we've already discussed this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't, I don't have anything further to add.
Very good. I would ask, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Thank you. And all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. Order FY twenty-three zero zero two, the Water Enterprise Fund Budget. This matter has been approved by the Budget and Finance Committee and the Finance Committee, in each case unanimously. And I would ask if the town manager has any comment with respect to this matter?
Only, only one thing which applies actually to both the FY twenty-three Water and also the FY twenty-three Sewer Enterprise Funds. We are, we know that we've got additional facilities opening and so we are building up, trying to build up an amount within the enterprise funds to cover the cost of hiring the, the expertise and hiring the staff that we're going to need for both water and sewer. So, so these budgets do reflect that, that gradual increase.
I thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. Budget order FY twenty-three dash zero zero three, this is the Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget. And once again, the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees have unanimously voted to approve recommendation of this measure. I would ask, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. Budget order FY twenty-three. This is the transfer station. FY twenty-three zero dash zero zero four, transfer station enterprise fund budget. Once again, I see that the Finance and Budget and Finance Committees have unanimously voted approval. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
One discussion.
Yes, Ms. Counselor Wood.
Through you to the town manager, and, and I forgot to ask this during our process. For this fiscal year, are we on track to finish in the positive for the transfer station? Because it's always been a worry in the past.
Yes. Yep, we are on track. We've done, quite frankly, pretty well. We increased rates across the board, particularly on large bulk items and, which was a long time coming. And, and we're going to operate clearly.
No concerns about this budget, then?
No.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second. We did that.
Thank you. No further discussion? Then I would ask, please, for all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Order FY twenty-three dash zero zero five, budget order authorization of revolving funds. I would defer to the town manager for comment.
Mr. President, this requires council vote on an annual basis and it simply reauthorizes for the year the revolving funds for the town clerk, the recreation, council and agent and library. All four of those departments have varying sizes of revolving funds, the largest being in the rec department at a hundred and fifty thousand. Smallest being the town clerk and the library for five thousand dollars. Just allows them to spend some of the receipts money that comes in out of the revolving fund.
Thank you. Budget and Finance and Finance Committees have unanimously voted approval for recommendation of this measure. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Second? Second. Is there any discussions?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor.
I will make it clear, as I do every year. So if my sister becomes an employee for the rec department for the summer, she will be covered under this budget. But she is not currently an employee and therefore I can vote on this without any conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor kindly vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. Ordinance FY twenty-three dash zero zero one, acceptance of Master of Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and three quarters, Old Scotland Links Golf Course Receipts Reserved for Appropriation. I'll just defer to the town manager for comment.
Mr. President, this is the second step in, in what was a two-step process. The first step, which the council voted, was the elimination of the enterprise fund, which is not necessary anymore. And this creates the alternative to the enterprise fund, a receipt reserved for appropriation account into which the golf course, any golf course revenues that, that the town realizes can be placed and out of which the council can vote to expend.
I thank you. And this measure has been approved unanimously by both the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. New business, we have the laying out and acceptance of a private way, Crimson Way. This is sponsored by Councilor Moore. This is order FY twenty-two dash zero sixty-five. I'll defer to Councilor Moore.
Yeah, just briefly, I think like others in the past, we've seen that we're looking to accept the private way Crimson Way. It's in my district and I would ask everyone to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval. I think that this is to be referred to Budget and Finance and Finance, is it not?
No.
Please don't go to CDC.
Yeah, CDC.
And then I would entertain a motion for referral to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Point of information, does it go to planning board at the same time, or have they already seen that?
Yeah.
Join me.
Join me. Join, decide. So I'll make a motion to move it to a joint meeting of the Planning Board and CEDC Committee.
Very good. Hold a second. Thank you very much. And further discussion? Yes.
The only thing I like to see as well is a comment from highway to make sure there's no road issues or things that need to be addressed before we accept.
Okay. I'll just defer to the town manager.
We, we have revamped how we review road acceptances and, and our practice is, and we'll confirm that this was done with this particular one, but our practice is before it even gets to the council. DPW, the town engineer, have reviewed all the issues along with the highway superintendent and the water sewer superintendent to make sure that conforms with all the town requirements, construction requirements and the planning board requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to refer to a joint meeting of the Community Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board.
Right information. The order refers to an exhibit A, which is supposedly attached here too, but it is not. So if I could just ask Mr. Moore what exhibit A describes.
Yeah, I think there is a visual that goes along with this. I believe it's missing from the packet. I'll ask Debbie to, to provide that. Maybe we could reintroduce in the next meeting with the exhibit.
I, point of information, I don't necessarily think we have to. I think we can submit this to the committees without having the exhibit. I know, you know, Council Colom, Colomotus is asking for it, but I don't think that prohibits us from sending it to committee.
Then if we're remediable, I would suggest we continue with the motion and we can follow up with the CEDC and the planning board with, with respect to the exhibit. It will be in the packet at the time.
For the committee meetings.
That's right.
Right.
So we have a motion to refer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. No further discussion? Seeing none? Then all in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Order FY twenty-two dash zero six-six contractual buyouts. And once again, please to the town manager.
Mr. President, this covers two retirements, one out of the library department and one out of inspectional services. And similar to the other ones that you voted on tonight, these, these are due to accrued sick time under collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion? I see none. Thank you. All those in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Thank you. Order FY twenty-two dash zero six-seven, the Bridgewater Firefighters Association Bargaining Contract Ratification. And I'll refer to, please, Mr. Dutton, if you would.
Mr. President, I think we came to agreement with the fire department, firefighters association, IIAF Local twenty-six eleven on a three-year contract, which I think is fair to, that certainly fair to the town and fair to the firefighters. The total cost of that for this year is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And obviously it's spread across number of different line items, but, but the total is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved. Second.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Thank you. Order FY twenty-two dash zero six-eight, contractual settlement, Bridgewater Firefighters Association. Once again, please, I'll defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm moving. Moving ahead. My apologies, on twenty, twenty-three oh oh six?
Yeah, oh, 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 six eight? Twenty-two oh six eight?
Eight.
Sit, wait a minute, now I've done it.
Break out of the one fifty.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, that is all this, oh, my apologies, my apologies. So there are two, I, there are two items. One is a contract ratification, then the other is the, the ratification, the funding of the contract. So yes, this would be the funding of the contract. And I've already mentioned the one fifty, so.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you again. Order FY twenty-three dash zero zero six, the CPA Reserve Accounts. Please, I will refer to the town manager for comment.
Mr. President, this is essentially the CPC budget for FY twenty-three. And it appropriates, well, you can, you read it, but it appropriates the projected revenues coming into the CPC into the three buckets, as we call them, which have to take at least ten percent of the, ten percent each of the revenues and also funds for administrative expense and finally funds outstanding debt for both the academy building renovation and the Keith Homestead purchase. And, and is presented to you in legislative form, so you can vote their budget.
Thank you. And I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just, yes, Counselor Wood. Through you to the town manager, if we could just request, you know, all the usual CPA numbers, balances, encumbrances and, you know, the general reports, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, we can move to citizen comments. Are there any citizens who wish to express comments this evening? Feel free to identify yourself and step to the podium. I see none. We will move on to council comments and I'd like to begin, please, this evening with Councilor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um. So what I'd like, I know I brought this up at, at the last meeting, I'm going to continuously bring it up, is I was speaking to a few of the volunteers for the Bridgewater Fourth of July Committee. They are very behind on fundraising, not, not only for this year, but always their goal is to raise more than they need for a year, so that they have funds to rely on, on a go-forward basis. They also relayed to me that the expenses are going to go up dramatically from years prior, be it the pyrotechnics, be it public safety, be it, you know, other things that are needed. So they're doing yeoman's work. They were at Roach Brothers where I saw them. They're going to be doing some fundraisers, but this is a real grassroots effort. So if everyone could take the time to donate, you know, five, ten, whatever you can afford, I think that would be great. I'm, I'm also going to call upon people. I know that they, at the actual fireworks, they do tend to, what we'll call it, pass the hat for lack of a better term. I would really like to see, there are so many people there that if they could give a few dollars, even the night of the fireworks, that would help out immensely. So anything that can be done, please, if, if you need to reach out to me. But the committee has been very overt, I think, doing a very good job leveraging social media to let people know how to contribute. So hopefully they'll, they'll meet their goal, they'll exceed it and we'll have another just fantastic Fourth of July event. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations on being Mr. President. And can thank you, Matt, for the work that you've done these past years as, as council president, to Eric, Eric on being vice president. I want to thank everyone that showed up for the townwide cleanup. I know Counselor George, Counselor Souza, Counselor Chase helped out and so did a lot of other citizens. I want to thank them. We cleaned up and put a lot of trash bags in that dumpster. It wasn't quite full, but a, a big dent was made and, and I do think the town does look a lot cleaner. I do notice that the, the street sweeper is, is out a lot now. Mr. Dutton, it looks, looks good that it's, it's going around the town. I want to also thank Wind Waste Management for helping sponsor the event and providing the dumpster, the shirts, the gloves and the bags and all that, and to Bridgewater Bagel for providing everybody with some food and beverage as we kicked off. And also reiterate what Counselor George said, you know, the Fourth of July is, is a pretty big day here in Bridgewater. It has been for many, many years with a parade and the events on the Legion Field to cap off the night with some fireworks. So it's not free. As Counselor Wood pointed out, there is absolutely no money in the sixty-nine, almost seventy million dollars that we spent tonight, or are spending tonight for that. So people need to donate and help step up, step up to the plate and donate to the, to the Fourth of July committee. That is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Perry.
Thank you. We're all over the map here tonight. That's all. It goes back to our old alignment. I'm, I'm putting that together. Or lower the map. That's all. It goes back to our old alignment. I'm I'm putting that together. Again, I echo the same sentiments regarding the Fourth of July. I would just like to speak out to the business community of which I'm also a part of. To see if they can offer some more support to the Fourth of July Committee. Being a former president of it years ago, it is all based on donations. So please do what you can to help kick off this year's event. I also want to thank, as was mentioned earlier tonight, the D and I Committee for their yeoman's work and the report that they put together. A lot of names listed on that committee I know personally. So thanks to all those involved. And also again, congratulations to our incoming president, Consular Chase and Consular Moore as vice president. And thank you to Consular Rushton for all the work he did as president. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Souza.
Thank our former president for his year. Tough year he did. We saw him at only two meetings. For all that time, but we still did well. And want to thank Eric Moore, Consular Moore. For his extreme work that he did last year. We were on a committee together. I had some health problems and he stepped up to the plate. And he took over the leadership and did an outstanding job. And I really didn't nominate him for vice president tonight because he wasn't in the room. I did it because I felt that he deserved it. And Mr. Chase, thank you for taking the position of president.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Moore.
All right. So again, I wanted to thank everyone for the vote of confidence and for the kind words. I really appreciate it. I certainly have big shoes to fill and I will do my best to do that. And I think the good news is those shoes will be sitting next to me and can coach me through this. So congratulations to you, President Chase. You know, I I've seen you participate in the past year. I've seen you at a lot of the presentations that the council's done. And I'm really excited to see that presence continue moving forward. So congratulations. I also wanted to thank Consular Rushton. I think he had an inspiring run as president. I don't know how many firsts we normally have as a council in a given year. But it was great to observe a lot of that. I think we saw the passing of the fire station, right? We saw the pride flag. We saw Juneteenth. We saw remote meetings. And and I really appreciated Matt's guidance through all of that. So thank you, Matt. And then I also wanted to thank, you know, Consulars Gallagher and George and others for the cleanup. It was great to see people around town in their in their in their special shirts sort of volunteering and picking up. And my sense was that volunteerism is contagious because you saw people sort of stop people and talk to people and other people asked when they could do it and how they could participate next year. So it was appreciated just as an event that you ran, but also I think as an example of what citizens, residents can do when they get involved. So thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Wood.
Thanks. So thank you to Matt Rushton for running a good year, great year. I think those were the fastest council meetings that we have ever gone through. I encourage a training video. For future councils.
Some meetings.
Some meetings. And and Matt doesn't know this yet, but there is a past president's club and he's got to host this year's annual party. So so we can talk about budget on that. I didn't, I did trying to, in humor, say that there is no money for fireworks in our budget. And and Dennis, thank you for pointing that out again.
True.
It's true. And, you know, in terms of elections, we can probably take some lessons from the Fourth of July Committee because because they get the word out. They get their communication out. Obviously, the, as as was pointed out. You know, it it's a great day with parades and fireworks and things like that. We we are going to see a lot of people from out of town. I actually had somebody not from that committee suggest that maybe the town could have naming rights for the fireworks. And that would be a revenue generator. And I I don't think that's really possible, but it was a unique suggestion. But yeah, support the fireworks. It's a, it's it's what makes our city in quotes, a town. Because, you know, that's that's one of the things, the common, the fireworks, the small-town feel, that's that's how we generate the, you know, the thing that makes us a town. So that's that's it for me tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Colomotus.
I'd like to express my appreciation to Matt Rushton for his services past year. Did a great job as president and good luck to you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you.
Full confidence in your, you ran a smooth meeting tonight. Thanks.
Well, I'm not so sure about that, but thank you. Thank you. Consular Rushton.
Thank you, sir. So first, I just thank to thank you to the rest of the council for for your comments. It was an interesting year as council president, that's for sure. And we collectively, as I mentioned earlier, got a lot of things accomplished. So I appreciate that. In terms of, and also congratulations to Consular Chase and Consular Moore and your newly elected positions. I just had one brief comment. Wanted to just talk about the new elementary school that's being built. And just mention, as as the year has gone by during COVID, there's really been some incredible work being done. By the School Building Committee, I believe, and Michael might be able to correct me, but the other night was our sixty-seventh meeting related to construction. And, you know, as it's really wrapping up this summer and the next couple of months, it's really an incredible building and site. If you've seen some of the pitches and if you haven't, you know, they do have a Facebook page with a communications committee set up. It's Bridgewater. School building on Facebook, you can find all of the most updated pitches. But the other night we did vote, the Mitchell School have a public tour on August twenty-seventh from nine to noon. And really encourage all of the residents in town as well as the council. I'm hoping that you can be there just to tour that building before all the kids move into it. But just want to congratulate really the school committee on, you know, a project that is on time and under budget by several million dollars. We have a few months to go, but I'm very confident that we'll we'll be under budget and on time. And so anyways, just want to put that out there, encourage people to plan for that and and sort of go through that entire building and see what's been built over the last several years. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. For myself, I would just like to firstly thank the council members this evening for your support and your and your confidence. And having installed me in this chair for a year. And I I I don't know that I'll ever be able to achieve the one-hour council meeting record that has been set by Consular Rushton. But he, I'll cer- I'll certainly try. Tonight wouldn't be a good attempt, but.
It was one quicker than that.
One yet that will actually meet that mark. I don't know. But as I had indicated earlier in the evening, Consular Rushton, I should say President Rushton's tenure in this chair. Is really, I think, remarkable. Not only, of course, we realize that he has a number of achievements to his record. That will forever remain, you know, you know, his name will remain in connection with those. But I just think that the nature of his style of leadership is is truly exemplary. And it's certainly something that I would do well to try to mimic and and I will do that. And I I just note that his sense of dedication to task and his commitment to the council and the community. Is just absolutely worthy of a lot of praise and and I I respect him greatly for that. I know we all do. But one final thank you to you, Consular Rushton, for your tenure here as chair. There have been many comments made tonight that I would, I would echo and, you know, certainly a number of us have referred to the upcoming July fourth. Fundraising effort. I absolutely agree and think that any, through any effort that we can individually and as counselors. To support that volunteer effort is absolutely emblematic of the, as Consular Woods said, of the type of town that we are. The fact that we may have twenty-eight thousand plus citizens, but we really are in many respects, certainly at the time of the Fourth of July celebration. A small town. And I I think that that's part of the attraction that brings people here, that keeps people here. And I certainly hope it's something we can always nurture and preserve. And so I agree completely with with those comments. We will be adjourning for executive session once I read the mandatory language. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, where discussing the matter in open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. Or litigating position of the public body and to adjourn from executive session. I would ask for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any discussion? No, then we will need a roll call vote.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you very much. We stand adjourned.